That you have poor wickedness, so Lord, we pray today that you would help all of us be representatives of who you are. God, we pray for the leadership in this county. We pray for the support of supervisor. Pray for them and their families. We pray that you bless them and help them to lead with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize Tim Ray, our county coordinator. Oh, I didn't see it. Okay. Give me one second.
Yeah.
I need a motion to amend the agenda.
Motion.
Second. All right. This is an order approving an amendment to the proposed agenda for the purpose of including for consideration the items set forth below. Have a motion in a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any questions? All right. Tim?
Hi, everybody. It's morning.
Good morning.
Tim Ray, Mississippi State University Extension in Harrison County. Last year about this time, I came forward to the board and invited you to our accountability luncheon, where we showcased-
Is that where you hold us accountable?
Well, it's where you hold us accountable, technically. So, what we want to do again is invite you out to the Extension office on County Farm Road, June 25th, which is a Wednesday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And again, we will provide a lunch for you guys. So, it's just a way for us to showcase to you some of the things that we've done for our clientele in Harrison County. Last year, we had the Director of Extension, Dr. Angus Katcha, and the Associate Director, Dr. Trent Erby, come down from Starfield to attend to us. And Mr. Kent Jones was available for us that day, so we appreciate you, Mr. Kent. But it's open to the board members, and there will be, again, food served for you. But we definitely want to showcase what we've been doing to you guys. So, it's a way for you to hold us accountable for our clientele. Any questions?
Tim, would you be kind enough to shoot an email up to that day?
I sure will. Last year, I did a personal invitation. We did an email, and I provided a personal letter to you guys. Looking forward to it. Thank you. Just a thank you. Y'all have a good day. You too.
Recognize Michael Switzer to discuss obtaining authorization to apply for a historical marker of Finley Cemetery.
Good morning, Angus.
Good morning.
My name is Michael Switzer. I live on 1519 John Clark Road. Been there since 1953, talking about old folks. As most of you know, the Mint's Tipcoes had lumber industry in the 1800s and the early 1900s. And you had towns like Liman, Toshia, McHenry, and other towns that lost its name on the way. But they were shipping on lumber to Cut Port Harbor. John Finley was a lumberman. That's where the Finley community's name from. Then you had Liman Reed, which Liman was named from. And Liman also had land in the Finley community, which he developed a cemetery. And the earliest tombstone in that cemetery is William Dickerton, 1890. So, in 1903, Liman Reed deeded the cemetery to the Methodist Church at the South. And he also deeded a journeyland that's to it, to the Baptists, for the purpose of installing a church and a school there. My grandmother attended that school. In 1974, Coleman Methodist Church, which is termed as the cemetery, deeded the cemetery to Melton Toshia for the purpose of maintaining the cemetery. In 1996, he deeded it to Harrison County. And Harrison County has been maintained since then. One of the problems is history can get lost because I've met several people around the neighborhood communities. How did this community come to be? And you get several different answers. So, I felt like a historical marker would give future people the information of what this cemetery was about, what was that history. Now, I would like to apply for the historical marker for the Finley Cemetery so that history will not be lost. The marker with one inch letter imposed cost $2,780, which I'm going to want to pay. What I need is authorization from you all to have a marker installed there at the cemetery. And I suggested that the marker be installed at the intersection of Highway 53 and the Finley Cemetery Road. And that's what I'm here for, is to ask the showers authorized, authorized, Dave Martin.
I would do that in form of a motion. Second.
Can we have a motion in a second?
Yes, sir.
Discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Ah.
Thank you. I would need a letter to that.
We'll get you that. Thank you. All right. We recognize Richard and Carol Poe to discuss their request to reverse the decision of the tax assessor concerning the deadline for the exemption from ad valorem taxes on their homestead property. Richard and Carol Poe are not here.
Yeah, we're here. We did. Move on. Move on.
All right. We recognize Paul Suctioner to discuss his claim regarding damage to his property allegedly caused by an emergency response.
Good morning. Paul Suctioner, County Farm Road, 1138 County Farm Road. On the 28th of March, emergency vehicles responded to the neighbors behind me. We share an easement with them, so it's on my property, but they have an easement to their property in the back. It was two fire trucks and an ambulance. They went to their property about 12:10 in the morning or something like that on the 28th. And upon exiting their property, the first fire truck leaving collapsed the culvert on the right-hand side and had to be drained of its water to get out. From the pictures and stuff, from what you can see of the culvert, it looks like they may have been driven too far to the north side of the culvert. So, there's concrete shoring on the north side that's sloped down for support and might appear like it's drivable on because it's also concrete like the culvert, but it doesn't line up with the actual asphalt of the road or the driveway. And it looks like they may have cut a little bit too far north to collapse the culvert. So, I'm asking for repairs for the culvert.
Is this culvert, that driveway, and that culvert connect to one of our county roads?
Yes. It's directly connected to that county. Well, so the culvert itself is not. It's my driveway, then the culvert, then my driveway. So.
But that connects to, that's the ditch that runs along that road?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't believe so. So, the County Farm Road runs north-south, and then it's some driveway, and then culvert. And so, the two ditches are in the north and south side of my driveway.
Any questions?
What is our liability? Is the question?
Well, the tort claim, because it's fire protection, emergency responder, they have to prove that it was counted. In other words, you can't pay a claim unless you find that it was reckless disregard, which has basically been defined as being just below intentional gross negligence, which is basically in order for it to be reckless disregard. So, how that qualifies reckless disregard?
I guess, Pat, I'd ask you, you talked to the driver, I presume, right?
Yes, sir. And Carol investigated that from the county side, if you want to talk to her.
The only question whether it's disregard, was it hard to see? Was it obvious or was it not obvious that he was running off? If it wasn't obvious, then I don't think there's any liability.
I don't think so. I think a couple of things, just talking to Pat, reading the reports, you have an emergency, which was a medical emergency that we called 911. Ambulance went, and of course, the two fire trucks went because they have EMTs on the fire truck, correct me if I'm wrong.
Right.
So, whoever gives their first helps. And then on the way out is when this occurs, they'd gone across it on the way in, then on the way out this occurred. The truck had water in it, so it was heavier than normal. They have to, one of the things, you can't just send the EMT, you have to send the truck in case there was actual fire. They ain't going to go all the way back to the fire station to get the water truck or the engines. I don't know how that, the law requires, county cannot pay a claim unless it's authorized by law. So, we have what we call the tort claim act, which only allows claim against law enforcement, fire protection, if you show reckless disregard, which has been defined by the courts as being gross negligence. So, you have to show there, for the bill to even pay the claim, you have to show there was gross negligence. Do you believe it was gross negligence or?
I mean, I'm not familiar with the, what would actually reach gross negligence?
Just below intentional.
I mean, I guess, I mean, I think it was in... It kind of provides an opportunity to cut a corner going from their easement and not pull on, completely onto the driveway to pass the culvert. But in terms of gross negligence or intentional?
That's unfortunate, but the legislature's made the law that way, and the board limited to what would be allowed under the tort claim act. How far is this from the public road?
I'd say 20 yards.
So, it's off the public roadway, about 50 feet. Does the drainage area that it drains connect up to the drainage roadway?
It's a little bit of a way, but yeah, we're believing that water drains down the side of County Farm Road.
It looked like from the pictures of the pipe, it cleared the pipe.
So, the pipe is okay? But on the right side, it shifted upwards, so now the neighbors that are not, that don't live behind me, like unlivid neighbors, their road floods a little bit more now as the pipes push up without the concrete on top of it.
The estimates are almost $4,000. When I looked at the pictures, I mean, on the contractor, that was high. It's something, the contractor has to mobilize to go out there to do it, so it's like...
I know it's on private property, but is this something that possibly our road department could go and help and maybe not replace, but I don't know with it being on private property, if that's allowed, but...
It's not allowed unless you do it as part of the settlement of what you're going to point. The board, even though the board disputes the claim, but the board believes that there's a chance that it could be reckless disregard, as far as a potential settlement, the board could authorize the road department to go out and look at it, see what the road department could, if they could perform more work as part of the settlement, you can do that. But you can't just draw on private property, you probably could do it as part of the settlement. So, if the board wants to table it and have the road department, it would take them to do it.
I don't know.
And the board could decide whether or not it's reckless disregard later.
Well, that's the problem with looking, as long as we legally can do it.
Just at the next board meeting, if they, or when they get back, we can adjudicate whether or not it's potential for reckless disregard.
So, we'll just...
Yeah, I'll make the motion to table it till we can investigate and see, get some more information on it. But I know at some point, if it's damaged, whether we fix it or not, we still have to respond to people's murders. And these trucks are large.
Yeah.
And we just can't pull up to a culvert and say, "We can't cross it."
No, I understand. I understand.
But at this point, if it doesn't get fixed and we have to cross it again, that road, that's getting, it's getting more narrow, more narrow, more narrow. And eventually, someone's going to have to do something about it, or we won't be able to access it.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
You'll just get his information or whatever, Tim. Okay. We'll recognize Frank Wardo to provide a report on the courthouse restoration.
I also have Jennifer Friday.
Okay.
So, all the data has been collected. We have the data that's been sent to your adjuster, that he's been on site. I guess the question is whether or not to file a claim or proceed with it?
So, real quick, y'all know we had the flood in Chancery in the record.
Yeah.
I'm just, I am looking for some direction going forward. Do we want to self-pay? Do we want to file an insurance claim? I've asked Frank, Ken, Jennifer to come in. Jennifer's our new insurance coordinator. She's kind of been coordinating this with Restoration Services as well as Frank. The bill is kind of off the lawn just for the cleanup and the restoration, and I think we still have some more ahead of us. So, really, today, we're just wanting to give y'all an update and to seek a little direction as to how we all wish to proceed.
My recommendation would be to file the claim. I mean, you're moving forward, I know that question came up, will that be punitive for y'all for future renewals? This would be on your previous carrier, not Coast Guard Road. Coast Guard Road does have a loss component, loss ratio component moving forward, not backwards. And so, this wouldn't affect that ratio.
So, that wouldn't affect, wouldn't move.
I mean, it's kind of, if you want to have a claim, that's a good time to have a claim because we've kind of been cleansed of anything in the past. So, I would definitely pursue it. Richard Booker's on it. He knows y'all's policy. He knows the building very well. We'll have, we have a claims review with him every Friday. We'll make sure that Jennifer's on that call, and we'll just stay on top of it as we move forward. Obviously, we believe this is going to probably grow bigger than what we initially thought. Our deductible is around $100,000 or is $100,000 previously under a previous carrier, so it'd be excess of the deductible, obviously. Speaking of deductibles, did you want me to talk about the deductible buyback? Cameron said that y'all had questions as far as that was concerned, or do you want to do that at a later meeting?
I'm buying here.
I mean, if you...
So...
We have 11 minutes until we go to a public hearing.
And they're not here.
They're not here.
We're in schedule for G.
So, in the past, y'all have bought a deductible buydown. If you recall, prior to Coast Guard Road, you had two separate schedules, your wind-resistant schedule and your non-wind-resistant schedule. And y'all would buy those deductibles down with the thought process that FEMA doesn't typically pay deductibles. And so, y'all always wanted to get the lowest deductible y'all possibly could. Previous years, your Masonry non-combustible, your better construction, you went from a 3% to a 2%. And then on your lesser constructed buildings, you went from a 3% to $100,000. Obviously, that would be extremely expensive to replicate $100,000 on your total schedule. So, we got a quote from 3% to 1%. That would be $256,989. Obviously, your bigger buildings are going to get much less deductible than what we previously had. Last year, you paid $216,876. So, a lot of entities that went into Coast Guard Road are either buying their deductibles down with some of their savings or they're buying excess coverage on top with some of their savings, depending on the entity. This would still have y'all at over $100,000 decrease if y'all purchased this of last year's program to this year's program. And obviously, for your bigger constructed buildings, the deductible will be quite a bit less. And so, you're getting broader coverage, better supplement, still through Coast Guard Road, and then you're buying your deductible down, and you're still saving money this last year over this year. I mean, this year over last year.
You buy the deductible down, we still save money.
Yes, sir. A little over $100,000.
So, is your recommendation to do that?
Yeah. The previous boards have always bought the deductible down. You know, one thing about your new deductibles to keep in mind, in Coast Guard Road, you have 3% deductible, but it's per unit, not of the TIB, which is a huge difference. And so, if one single building is damaged in a hurricane, the deductible applies to that building.
Just that it doesn't apply to the whole.
Doesn't apply to the whole TIB like it previously did. Now, if you had a catastrophic loss, this would definitely come into play. So.
I go with that.
Yeah. So, we just need to make a motion to you?
Yeah, I make a motion.
Get the buyback deductible down?
Yeah.
That's it. You're comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
Recommendation? Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Thank you all. Thank y'all for lending us Dan and Tim and Tricia over the past, Coast Guard Road has been a bear, so rocky. There's been a lot of participation from the county, from input, and it's, we appreciate it. We're very proud of what we've been able to accomplish. Thank you.
We all will recognize David Hardy to provide an update on the stretch of cost of the proposed building schedule for the new county facility in Seaway Ridge.
Good morning. Good morning. Appreciate y'all being here this morning to give you an update. I provided a handout that has a summary on the front page, in detail backing up. I thought it'd be, it would help to put things in context, to give a, just a quick project scope recap. There would entail recoding of the existing parking this area for about 194 spaces, re standby generator on the facility, exterior improvements to the existing property, recoding within the last merit, making improvements to the exterior envelope, removing the old vinyl soffits, and weather ceiling above the vinyl soffits in our inspections of the property. It's a pre-engineered metal building structure with cold-form metal frame walls that do not extend all the way up. So, there's, in some areas, you can see daylight over the top of the wall, which we can't have that with this type of facility. The general renovations for the health department component of the project, about 19,400 square feet, the diversion center, about 9,400 square feet, and common areas of about 1,600 square feet. That would be the elevator lobbies, some circulation space for the tenant on the second floor. So, you've got about a total of 30,400 square feet of renovation. And looking at updated cost estimates, there's an attachment A of this report, and we're showing construction cost to be in the range of 6.9 to 7.6 million. If you equate that out on a per-square-foot basis, that's $227 to $250 a square foot. Total project cost would be 7.4 to 8.1 million. Understanding factors that are affecting this current estimate, we provided an early test-fit opinion of cost on the project that made assumptions that the existing mechanical systems there could be reused. Further investigation with our mechanical electrical team revealed that the existing systems in the building are all residential-style split system units with this fiber board ductwork, which is not allowed under the requirements for ventilation of healthcare facilities. So, that is a component of this Ajray 170 that is required in the mechanical code. And the purpose of it is to ensure proper air separation between exam rooms and office spaces.
Just so I should understand, Dave, if you don't mind, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
The H fact that you're discussing is included in this 6.92 to 7?
Yes, sir. So...
It's included in those figures.
So, what we've recommended in these figures that are in here is replacement of all mechanical systems within the spaces that we propose to renovate in order to meet the air separation requirements, understanding you need ducted returns. The building does not have ducted return to plumbing returns. So, you have shared air between exam rooms and offices, which, when you're dealing with public health, TB, measles, COVID, chickenpox, flu, you don't want that. So, in order to meet the requirements for healthcare facilities, we're recommending replacement of those mechanical systems. Now, the other advantage from the public perspective is you want to move into the building and not have major problems with it for 20 years, preferably. With those existing mechanical systems there, we cannot guarantee that. We have no clue how long they would operate. So, it's a twofold challenge of saying that we might reuse any of that existing equipment, that you have to replace all the ductwork anyway. And so, in order to do that, you're taking all the ceilings down. So, the other thing we've included, since you're having to replace all the ceilings, all new LED lighting. So, with this project, you'll have new LED lighting, new mechanical systems for the health department and the diversion center facility, knowing that the go-forward maintenance on the building should be minimal. And importantly, you have a facility that meets all the required codes for healthcare facilities. I have a report attached regarding the air handling requirements for healthcare facilities as well. The schedule, assuming the board says you want to go forward with this project, the schedule would look to receive bids at the end of this July and to award bids sometimes in mid-August and to have construction complete by the summer of 2026. And we've, I've been scheduling 10 to 12 months for construction on this project simply because it's, majority of it's indoor work that could immediately start, and you don't have weather conditions to deal with. So, we think the work will go fairly quick. That's the big picture of the report. Happy to answer any detailed questions that anyone may have a project.
The only thing, and I don't think you can answer this question in particular for the interest of the board, the, especially as it relates to the diversion center. We're talking about 2026, Dave, if everything goes down?
Yes, sir.
The building will be ready to occupy.
Yes, sir.
I assume that the state health department, the state, you know, health people would be still having the money, the grants and all that, that they were anticipating getting to open this diversion center? And I don't know, we, that would be a question we'd have to ask them. If that's something we need to think about, especially if we're fixing another possible $7.6 million.
Yes, sir. Can I ask a question?
We wouldn't do this and wind up, they come to us and say, "We sorry, we don't, we can't open it. We don't have the funds or the grants."
The curse of healthcare requirement, I can understand that with the health department side. On the diversion center side, that's a mental health facility, not a...
It's institutional occupancy, so it's actually a higher standard because you have patients overnight. And so, the ventilation requirements for someone that's inpatient, admitted patient, those are higher requirements. So, it's a combination of bringing in outside air, air changes. The building currently has zero air changes. You've got to bring in outside air, and as our recommendation, that we provide new mechanical systems to support this. We need to check with users, like the existing residential system. You'd still have the ductwork issue on those as well. So, I understand, and when you look at it, you might make assumptions. Well, it was doctor's offices before, but it was built to the lowest standard possible in terms of mechanical systems.
It's just something that we need some verification on, and Nathan just brought up a good point, the possibility of federal cuts.
I don't know if any of this comes down from the federal side.
Some of that grant money might be federal grant monies coming to the state. So, if they're impacted by that, we need, I mean...
Delbert called me on Friday and told me that just in what we know of right now is $130 million in cuts and stuff coming from the federal side to the state budget. And so, I don't know if that affects this.
I think the arbor funds are committed. The question is when, you know, the commitment inspired, or he got that money.
Yeah, the money, that money was already committed, but I think there was an end date on that when we had to spend it, if I'm remembering correctly.
There was a couple million dollars, and I don't remember the exact amount, that the state was going to, yeah, to open up the diversion center.
It had to be allocation.
I mean, how much? How much? How much?
One point five.
One point five million dollars. My concern is, is that still available or potentially available?
In twenty-six.
In twenty-six? If it's not, we're spending eight million dollars, maybe it'll come later, who knows? But I'm just.
That was, that money was granted to Pineville, so I'm gonna have to confirm that with them to make sure that it's still available.
I hope it is. I'm not saying it's not, I just think that when we start investing seven point some million dollars in remodeling, and that, of course, that includes the health department, so I don't know how much exactly. What, what, Dave, can you, what is the breakdown for the diversion center in the health department? Is that in here as the remodeling?
So I do, I did not prorate the mechanical and electrical cost, but the, the architectural component alone for the diversion center, there was a million on the diversion center, and then we would add to that the mechanical electrical plumbing to support that. So I would think it would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of one point eight, somewhere in there.
And we're facing a half a meeting at the exact date with them, so we can get that information.
Another thing why you're almost so good, because the health department now operates out of a building that the county had rent free from a hospital. Now you're going to a cost, and I don't think, have we, anybody discussed with the health department about contributing now as opposed to sitting in the building for free? It's gonna cost the county money. Probably need to authorize county attorney or us to approach them without some rent.
See what, what contribution they can make.
Yes. So talk to half the building.
Definitely, we need to do that.
And they got more diseases on their side. Apparently.
I'm sorry, the number for the health department. There was a meeting last week with the, I mean, fifty who indicated that he had spoken with Dr. Edney, the Jackson, and that the health department's known the required space that they needed was much smaller than we had planned. And I don't know if anyone's had that conversation with you, I apologize if they have.
Well, I did receive some communication from Kent regarding that. The facility, the health department's currently in is twenty-seven thousand square feet. So we're moving them to less space than they have now. Now, to answer the question of how small of a space could they get by with, we would have to revisit with Michael Whitehead where they could cut, if they, if it was just absolutely necessary to cut. And I think that conversation got to a larger conversation as well about, for example, we added a TB treatment space within this facility, which is highly transmissible by airborne movement. And there was some discussion about how much Memorial would pick up on that public healthcare side. So that's really a high-level administrative discussion to say that any of those current programs that are supported by the health department might be managed in a separate facility. That's above an architectural issue, so. But that's where that conversation was coming from, the question, oh, they got, you know, almost twenty thousand square feet, is that too much? So it depends on program, location, and accommodation for the program.
And there's a second part of the discussion from Walt to discuss the binding option.
I guess with the mental health diversion center portion being roughly two point eight, two million dollars, depending on how much of that is grant funded from the state. We do have options available as far as like the interest income earned on the ARBA funds. With this being something that's coming up real after, and we need to talk about the management. This would be considered obligated per the reporting standards with the ARBA funds. So this would be something we have to come out of pocket for. Luckily, though, we have made a considerable amount of interest income over the years to the ARBA money, something to the tune of about four million dollars. Pretty well, all things considered. But with that, I believe what is remaining after the purchase of the building, so it is about one point five million that we could allocate toward renovations and the three insurance costs associated with this property.
One and a half million, you said?
Yes.
Still a good amount. Nothing to sneeze at, it's not, it's still good.
Yeah. I think after further review of, you know, the additional grant funding and all that that we have available, I could come back with other options or, I guess, more specific.
Have a question relative to the obligation component. So if we had a contract awarded in August of this year that would not meet the requirements for obligation of the ARBA funds?
With, and I, I need to get back and review because are you involved with the renovation of the ADD building?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So we, if it's under contract in August, we could potentially go back and obligate those funds with the treasury? I don't believe the contract in its existing state fell under those provisions coming in right.
Because we would actually have a contract obligated and some expenditures incurred prior to the end of the year and maybe even a way we could schedule work on the diversion center component to maximize the eligibility of those dollars.
Okay.
Something to think about.
Yeah, let me go back, I hope you know you today. Let me go back and review that. So I'm not sure I have a answer.
Well, let me understand something. You didn't, you said that there were interests earned on the ARBA fund?
Yes.
That, that interest earned, is that under the restrictions of any kind? So that, that comes in effect in the general fund, so to speak, that we can, we, we're not limited?
Yes, and that is correct. Per the guidance that has been circulated by the treasury, I believe in some of the primary circulators and even some of the Epic use. It's been a recurring thing throughout those documents, that program income is, or I suppose interest income is not considered program income, therefore is not subject to restrictions on the.
So we don't need to take any action or anything?
I don't, I don't think we need to take any action.
Well, so my takeaway from today's meeting, because our team needs to move rapidly to beat these deadlines.
I would say, even though I brought the question up about the grants and all that, I think we need to proceed because I'm somewhat confident that that will happen, the grant. So we need to proceed. I didn't mean to feel wet like, you know. It's done, we're too far in it to start.
We're very far in it.
Okay, so before we move to seven and eight, for those of you who are here for the appeal on the subdivision, that has been rescheduled to our June meeting. The, I guess they, the person, the.
I got a call on Friday.
I just don't want them to have to sit here and do everything.
I got a call from Mr. Williams on Friday. He got in touch with Jennifer, and Jennifer got in touch with Robbie. They requested reschedule the appeal to the first major gene because one of their, one of the team members could not be here today.
Reschedule to the first meeting in June. All right. Thank you. So we need to go forward and move to seven and eight, right? All right, number seven, order rescinding, order. Well, this is just for an update. These are concerned.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Did you need us to, did the board take action today?
I just need a vote of confidence to keep moving forward.
Yeah.
Just making sure we didn't.
We need to keep moderating.
Keep moving forward. And we have Robbie or Chris to contact the state department of health and try to spark some discussions about their contribution to the.
Well, I was hoping in this meeting that.
Okay. You have a meeting coming up?
Yes, the other meeting was coming up, went off, went, I don't know how many people, but lots of them went off.
And I would ask the question if I saw an email from Michael Whitehead this morning, he's with the department of health. They're asking for a status update?
I responded, Tony, I responded to Mike this morning.
Great, great.
I told him we were meeting on this topic this morning, and I would update him this afternoon.
I was waiting. I think the meeting that's coming up on the diversion center, the mental health, was not involved in that meeting. I mean, the health department, they were involved.
They're not.
They're not.
The meeting on Brown Avenue.
It's only for.
Mental health.
Mental health and diversion.
Well, my, my thing that I want to give to the mental health people is the reference to the grant monies to operate it. We can do all this facilities and come up, and they don't have the money to open it up and operate it. That's what my concern is. So I want to talk to them. I don't know if the mental health people would, excuse me, the health, health people, department would necessarily be involved in that, but I guess if we're talking about renovations, you can't separate it. Renovation for both health and diversion center. So it might be wise, maybe ask them to attend that meeting too.
I think the question is, the county has paid, wasn't costing the county any money to provide a building to them then, it is now. And they're not paying anything.
Who are you talking about?
The health department.
Yeah, that's correct, that's correct.
I don't think anybody's told them that as well. Their budget here is coming up too.
Y'all can authorize Tim.
Or Robbie.
Or Robbie to contact the health department to see if they want to contribute to.
Yeah. Pass the rule.
So we may need to take action on that.
Anyway, we'll open some.
You need to put that on the minutes?
No, I'm just.
Right, you're doing, or can we?
We don't want to do something without the board's permission. We don't think it's, need to take action on it.
So now we move to seven?
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Do you need me for seven or eight?
I'm just.
For maloney.
Okay.
Order rescinding order adopted April seventh, two thousand twenty-five, approving modification in agreement with Eli Gall, Gall, Hardy Architects.
Second.
Okay, motion second, discussion, all in favor? Order approving agreement amendment number one, addendum number one to agreement. D G H Architects for property located one four zero five five Seaway River.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Consent agenda items nine through twenty-three, need a motion?
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order approving travel for Alex Barstow, real property, Hilda Fraser and John Cotter. Discussion, all in favor? Order spreading upon the minutes personnel changes for the tax collector's office.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing the board president to execute the grant agreement with the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality for the solid waste assistant grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand, twenty-nine dollars and two cents.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order acknowledging receipt of check number eleven thirty-five in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, ninety-two dollars and sixty-nine cents representing funds in excess of the two thousand twenty-four fee cap.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order to consider the request of Circuit Clerk Justin Wetzel for consideration by the Board of Supervisors to allocate funds in excess of the statutory salary cap for calendar year two thousand twenty-four. Discussion.
Oh, and discussion is, is, yes, and takes away at the same time. We're shaking it, but you're taking it back.
You have a radar on? You said your name and you walked up the back door.
I'm assuming there's nothing wrong with that, it's maybe now maybe later, same difference?
I think it is, but I haven't looked at it to see what it's following, because it qualifies your fee, but you're trying.
Right, yeah, I mean, on the A F R, it says it may be made by the board.
Certainly, I think it does qualify that.
Should we table it?
Why don't we table, is it okay to table the next thing, let me make sure? I don't think that's a problem.
I understand it's the same difference, but just.
Just table it till Monday, and then I'll make sure, I don't, I don't think that's a problem, so just make sure I didn't look at that.
Motion to table?
That's it.
Any other discussion, all in favor? Order approving use of E M A conference room for community emergency response team classes on weeknights and weekends with approval from the county administrator.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order approving termination of the professional consulting agreement with Tussa Consulting Services as recommended by the Harrison County Emergency Communications Commission.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing and approving M O U with Kessler Air Force Base for public radio safety system.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order concurring with the road manager on employment as listed and is on file with payroll clerk.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing and approving the issuance of a beach event permit as listed.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Report from Bobby Trustclaire clarifying the request from Coast Electric to utilize county and ball fields. All right, he's not here, we'll move on. Ten a.m. appeal. Good morning, all right, number thirty-six. Zoning recommends concurring with planning commission's recommendations for cases thirty-six through forty-two. Does the motion, all right, is that second? Any discussion on any of these? All in favor? Thank you. Order concurring with the county administrator on employment as listed and on file with payroll clerk.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order acknowledging receipt of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six annual term bid received on April ninth, two thousand twenty-five, and authorizing the award effective July first, two thousand twenty-five, of each tabulated with the lowest bidder being best and principal supplier, next lower bidder, lowest bidder being the alternate supplier.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing Seymour Engineering to prepare bid specifications and mechanical drawings for the new concession stand at Isaiah Frederick's Ball Field.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order approving the purchase of a van for the juvenile intervention court program from Premier State, Ford State Contract at a cost of fifty-four thousand, two seventy-three, twenty-four.
Motion.
Sheriff Haley?
All right, total inmate count, seven hundred ninety-seven, sixty-eight of those are misdemeanors, thirty-eight federal, one hundred twenty-two state inmates, fourteen of those are ready to go. Got nineteen juveniles at the adult detention center, ten at juvenile detention, nine of those are Harrison County, one is Hancock.
Thank you. Order authorizing an approved payment in the amount of seventeen thousand, six seventy-eight, seventeen cents to City of Long Beach Police Department.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing advertisement for the services of cleaning air ducts throughout the detention center.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order spreading on the minutes the personnel changes of the sheriff's office.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing and approving the board president to execute the cooperative equipment agreement with Department of Defense firefighter program. Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing and approving the addition of Sidney Leschner, Road Department District Five, to the list of assistant receiving clerks and General Boy Bell. Order authorizing and approving the addition of Sidney Leschner, Road Department District Five to the list of assistant receiving clerks and General Boy Bell Insurance Coordinator official bond and further authorizing bonding on the same.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing the disposal of assets per the attached list.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order correcting the inventory, adding back an item still in use that was previously listed as espoused of.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order approving the final auction list to be auctioned off on propertyroom.com.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order approving payment of claims listed payable from the tort account.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing and approving travel for Manny McKay, First Judicial District, Justice Court Administrator Cynthia Amy, Second Judicial District Justice Court Administrator to attend training at the Mississippi Judicial College on May fourteenth through sixteenth in the amount of one hundred and fifty six dollars for each.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order adjudicating the request for travel for Daniel Wendell, Danielle Wendell, peer support specialist to attend a two day conference hosted by the National Alliance on Mental Illness in Hattiesburg.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing and approving the county administrator's transfer of five hundred dollars for the purchase of a backpack blower and push mower.
Motion.
Second, discussion. Is that the ones that were stolen?
This is, yes.
All in favor? Order approving the extension of the lease agreement with Coastal Family Health Center for the property located two fifty seven Davis Avenue, Pat Chris Jim, for an additional five year term.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing and approving payment of twenty one thousand, five hundred to Forbes Mazaris for audit fees.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order approving payment to the following.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order approving resolutions in the matter of the regular and special homestead exemptions rejected by the Department of Revenue for the year twenty twenty four.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Number sixty four, order authorizing Elizabeth Tibbleay to serve as a volunteer at the MES ninety six Annual Convention in Biloxi, June nine through twelve.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order, order authorizing and approving the installation of streetlights as listed.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order approving the payment of registration fees in the amount of five hundred dollars per person for Justice Court Judges Albert Fallon, Nick Tannen, Teresa Lyons, Brandon Ladner and Diane Laden to attend Mississippi Judges' Summer Convention, June twenty ninth through July second at the IP in Biloxi.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Order to repair and resurface of certain streets within the city of Pat Chris Jim located Supervisor Voting District Three.
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
That's a reappearance.
Okay, then this is through the interlocal agreement. Okay, all in favor? Order adjudicating the tax sale of August twenty sixth, twenty twenty four on tax parcel number zero seven one one N dash oh two, one oh three dot oh 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 for twenty twenty three taxes as a remis.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all.
There's an error in assessment by the tax assessors that qualifies the subside and just so the board understands that what that means is the tax purchaser does not get interest of penalties. Doesn't cost the county anything, so we don't pay back, we don't get interest penalty, that's like redemption.
All in favor? Order adjudicating the tax sale of August twenty sixth, two thousand twenty four on tax parcel number zero seven zero eight P dash zero one dash oh oh six dot oh 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 for twenty twenty three taxes. Second.
And also an error in mapping that occurred with the assessment issue qualified to be subside.
Okay, any other discussion, all in favor? Number seventy, order adjudicating the tax sale of August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three on tax parcel number one two zero nine B dash zero one dash zero one four dot oh two one for twenty twenty two taxes.
Motion.
Second.
You have to ask.
But this one had a, it was a special assessment with the Rummy's plea levying against the parcel.
By the city.
By the city.
So it was sold for the assessment as opposed to tax. For separate taxes, the city collects the assessments under, we're asking for that, so this doesn't need to be settled.
All in favor? Number seventy one, order adjudicating the employment of Timothy Holloman and Voice Holloman and Associates to represent Harrison County in litigation matters as listed below.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Both of these are automobile accidents, just so we're noted, the first one, the county's not involved in it all, the second one is the one on Commerce Street, all at Sand Beach Department.
And we have first and second, all in favor? Order acknowledging statutory salary increase for court reporters effective July first, twenty twenty five and approving set increases.
Motion.
Second.
Just a note that we still will pay a high portion of that, even if statutorily we have to. So there has a cost to the county.
The court reporters were already previously done, this one is for the youth court, I think she must have been left out.
And also, we're gonna need a budget amendment on that.
Yeah.
Just working those numbers up to see.
Yeah.
The dollar amount. That'd be next for me.
Right.
All in favor? Order adjudicating the friends of the court training held on April twenty ninth and thirtieth and May first from five thirty to nine thirty as a special session conducted exclusively for members of the Michael Memorial Baptist Church.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing expenditures as listed as necessary to advertise and bring into favorable notice opportunities, possibilities and resources of Harrison County, Mississippi, including all forms of advertising.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor? For justice one now. And then the. Order approving an amendment to the proposed agenda dated May fifth, twenty twenty five for the purpose of including for consideration the items set forth below.
Question.
We need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Okay, discussion.
So last board meeting, we had an offer on purchasing the old the Appleville Police Department. The board requested me to get an appraisal, we have requested and received set appraisal, the appraisal come back at one hundred ninety thousand. The offer at that time was a hundred and seventy thousand, we have received another offer on it, which is a tax for two hundred thousand from a different market. So we got two hundred on the offer and hundred seventy on another offer, one for two hundred is ten thousand more than the appraisal.
I'll make a motion to accept that offer.
We all right.
Should have done that executive session, but that's okay. We told them with the appraisal, now your offer may go away. It's okay.
That's what it is.
No, a hundred ninety was.
So we have first, second, all in favor?
Yes, sir.
Well, you go ahead and authorize the county administrator to sign that offer.
Motion to authorize county administrator to execute the agreement?
Offer acceptance.
Motion.
Okay, first, second, all in favor? So we pass both of that. All right, so moving on.
I have anything else before we report to the board, we had oral argument before the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals on the middle part of the case, the oral argument's fine. Interesting thing about the case is the no county employee shot anybody, everybody's confirmed, the highway patrolman only one that hit its target. And then nobody meant to shoot the child, it was aiming at his father who was shooting at the deputy. The oral argument went very well, but on appeal, the trooper had never been made a party to the lawsuit, so it was kind of a weird argument in the sense that the court was a little bit concerned that the one that everybody agrees shot or bullet at the baby was not there, weapon lawsuit, so it was kind of an interesting argument in that respect. But it went well, I do expect it to be affirmed at one issue, I'm not sure how the court's gonna handle that. Lawyers were arguing against, I'm not doing away with qualified immunity totally, which is court, we said, that's not supposed to do, you have to go to the Supreme Court, you have to go to the Supreme Court for that. Not that that was even a case to do away with qualified immunity, if ever there was a case where the shooting was justified. In that case, shooting of Mr. Smith, not the baby, but he shot at the deputy who was exposed. If they were hurt fired, so I don't expect that to get reversed except for that one quirky issue about the trooper that they could reverse, but only as to the trooper. And the court may note that, that all these parties here weren't involved in that, and the argument that they made was, which is kind of a ridiculous argument, but the argument clearly was that when the, they shot, they, they made the trooper react and shoot officers. So that's how you kind of tied in the deputy and the other police officers, that they shot because they reacted to the, or the highway patrolmen reacted to the other police officer shooting. Which was kind of weird because what they reacted to was Mr. Smith shooting at them, not the other way around. It was kind of a weird argument, just because the trooper was not there, never been made a party to litigation. So you're talking about doing away with his qualified immunity and he's not there. It was kind of weird, but that was responsible, the plaintiff's not the defendant.
Anything else?
Nothing else.
Angela?
No. The only thing, and I don't know if this is a good time, but in reference to that homestead exemption, you know, it says that we don't have the authority to grant the homestead exemption after past date, what sign, I assume that's what that means. What we're actually doing is giving, if we were to approve the request, for example, on this, and I don't know, what we're actually doing is giving that person a tax exemption.
That's correct, in the past, and now, most of the time in the past when the board granted some relief, there was some issue with how they got denied or something like that, that was on my part of the county, not, not the part of the, here, this is purely the taxpayer.
That's on part of the applicant or the.
Advocate did not file by April first, and the statute says the board has no authority to grant a homestead exemption.
Do we have authority to grant that exemption, tax exemption, because we know it's not going to be reimbursed by the state? Do, does this board have authority to grant that request?
Not an exemption, no, not a homestead exemption, not if, not if they didn't file an application by.
No, no, I'm saying, I'm saying that if, if we were to decide to approve these folks, this request, what we're doing is granting an exemption, a tax exemption, you know, no reimbursement's coming back, anything, we're, we're, we're granting a tax exemption.
That's correct.
And we can do that.
You cannot give the homestead exemption.
Not the homestead exemption, but I realize we, our action, if we were to approve that request, would basically be giving that party an exemption on their taxes.
That's correct. And I don't think you can do that under the statute, but we have had cases in the past where there was some issue on the county's end where they didn't get their exemption. And there, the board didn't, we didn't really grant the exemption, what the board did was give them the tax. At the homestead exemption rates, it's the same effect, now the county didn't get reimbursed for that, but that's, those cases were generally where some issue occurred on the part of the county, not on the part of the taxpayer. I always had that issue in the past, the board has granted relief, now in here, I think not only did these parties not file by, they came in before April first, but they were busy and didn't do it. So they didn't wait and they came back after April first, but we also believe that they had homestead exemption on their other home and wouldn't have qualified anyway.
The reason I ask you, why is the state telling those folks to come to the board of supervisors? We can, they need, we need to ask them to stop doing that, but we don't have the authority to grant the, the homestead exemption.
Like they were, my opinion is they were just getting them off their back.
Yeah, well, that's.
And so I think that's the only reason they tell them, the only relief, only possible relief would be for the board to grant a tax lower rate.
That's right.
To not give the exemption. I don't think the board has that authority in this case.
That's right.
And I think they're just deflecting, so the people are satisfied, I mean, it's not unfortunately an excuse that you, it was too busy when you came down here, you got four months, January, three months, January to April first. So I don't think that's a problem mainly, but it's just like we moved, I got homestead and we bought a new house before April first. But I couldn't go and file on that house because I still had it on the house and a half.
Still had it on the other.
You can't, can't double dip. And I think that's kind of what was happening here.
The statute says you have to live in the house on January first in order to.
That's right, that's correct.
And, and to have a double claimer, homestead exemption in two places is a felony, isn't it?
It's a crime, I don't know if it's a misdemeanor. People do that before, unfortunately.
Anything else?
I just want to clarify that.
Mr. Administrator?
I do, I'd like to bring to the board's attention that about two weeks ago, one of my guys received an award for the largest fentanyl seizure in the state of Mississippi, and it was made right here in Harrison County. That being said, I would ask that the board consider allocating some of the opioid funds so that we can purchase a mobile tag reader for that individual who works interstate to just help him do his job a little bit better.
Can we exclude certain tag numbers?
And just write them down.
There is some kind of, I don't know what works with, you spray your tag and it makes, where it can't read it or something, I don't think it works.
Not that you know he bought it, it's done.
They actually have a clear cover that goes over your tag that a camera can't read, and you can see through it, like, but a camera cannot read.
I didn't know this, but I bought an escort radar detector, just for entertainment. When I went to New Orleans to the Fifth Circuit, I didn't know it did this, but every stoplight, it would warn me that there was a camera at the next stoplight. Not that I'm going ten miles an hour and doing it down in New Orleans, I guess if you ran the light, it takes your tag.
GPS does that too. An app on your phone, if you put it in, it tells.
Yeah, that tags like built into your truck.
I was on the, this is the.
Yeah, no, it's built into your truck too. Yeah, if you have, yeah, it tells you everywhere there's.
Matt, do you have any idea of the cost?
The, the one that we're looking at is around fifty six to sixty thousand dollars. Again, I'm, I'm not sure how much we, we, we receive, the county received, but I at least wanted to.
One seventy five. Now, would that come out if we got our budget.
Yeah, we've already committed to the judge a certain amount.
I think hers was about sixty.
Hers was about sixty.
I think it was.
About one seventy five.
So we have enough to cover, okay.
So that was for what, Randy?
Yeah.
On using some of those funds for.
Yeah, she actually, she actually called me and let me know, to let me know that she had, she had requested.
Yeah.
And we already.
We've approved that.
Yeah, I have no, I have no issue.
We've got enough to cover, I don't.
No, do y'all want to, somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Okay, second, any other discussion on that?
Authorizing just the sheriff or Judge Mueller also?
We've already.
We already did Judge Mueller.
She did authorize it, I don't think you've actually authorized, she sent a.
I know she sent a request over, that's why I was asking, I don't know that we voted on that.
I don't think we voted on what she was.
I don't recall that.
Okay, well, let's do, can we do both?
Let's do both.
Okay, so authorizing the purchase of a tag reader for the sheriff's department and to use. Okay, so authorizing, um, the purchase of a tag reader for the sheriff's department and to use, and use those whatever funds she requested for drug.
It was like fifty or sixty thousand.
Yeah, how much?
Okay, the motion or second, any other discussion, all in favor? Motion carries, all right? Anything else?
So you have to get two purchase orders down.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
All right.